Good evening. I would like to call the City of Mount Vernon City Council Meeting for June 11th, 2025 to order. The time is now 7:01. Could you please stand with me? If you would, I'd like to believe this. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every change since the dawn of all. I don't want to seize the roll call of Councilmember, but the city clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Excuse tonight.
Councilmember Brocksmith.
Here.
Councilmember Correia.
Here.
Councilmember Hudson.
Here.
Councilmember Molinar.
Here.
Councilmember Tercero.
Is also excused tonight.
Councilmember Vanderstoep.
Here.
Thank you. Then two is the approval of tonight's council meeting agenda. We were just made aware of one item, 6C, that we want to pull from the agenda. Other than that, there are motion to approve tonight's agenda without item 6C.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mary, a second by Gary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Okay. Community comments is next. If you are here to talk to council tonight, I see you come on up to the podium, state your name and city of residence, and limit your comments to about three minutes. I will note that there is, on the agenda tonight, a presentation from Washington State Department of Transportation. I've heard that there was some talk about that being a public comment opportunity. That item, at that time on the agenda, it won't be a public comment opportunity. So if you are here and want to talk about something Washington State Department of Transportation related, now's the time. Adair, I'm sorry you had to sit down to hear that. Come all the way back up. Good to see you.
Thank you. Good evening, council members, mayor, staff. I'm pleased that we're going to receive an update from Washington State Department of Transportation tonight on some key infrastructure. I wanted to address specifically State Route 536 and the West Mount Vernon Bridge with a bit of your time. It seems that any local discussion recently about safe active transportation connection for pedestrians to and from West Mount Vernon quickly becomes convoluted with the popular and frankly, ideal solution, which is either an independent pedestrian bridge or an appended structure to the existing bridge. What I want to talk about tonight is what we can do specifically within the constraints of the existing bridge as part of this repeatedly delayed painter project that WashDOT has before them. I'd like to focus on that specifically for the following reasons. One, a new pedestrian structure, as we've heard, is going to be incredibly expensive, a devoted pedestrian structure. Even though WashDOT funding shortfalls have postponed the painter project, they're still formulating plans. A painter project is the only leverage we currently have to get something done in the short term. We can't afford to sit on this, and it has to be a partnership. Two, everyone knows and acknowledges the hazard presented by the existing bridge. Pedestrians regularly step off of the high sidewalk into the shy line of the roadway. Even with one person passing another unencumbered, more often someone is compelled to step down, exposing themselves to risk. It's unacceptable to acknowledge this danger, yet continue to give our attention to a project that sits at the bottom of the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Program, with no funding or mechanism or strategy. Three, WashDOT has asked us specifically about this in the last few presentations to the city council. To my knowledge, we've not taken their studies or recommendations and formulated our own preferences to make the bridge safer. In some instances, we've kicked back their design proposals. Four, I feel WashDOT has not studied every combination of design options. I've reviewed their work carefully, and I've tried to demonstrate this to council in the past through measured drawings, that their conclusion to do nothing is unacceptable. Some level of improvements using their own proposals is possible. Public safety demands accountability here. Five, this bridge is going to continue to serve us for the foreseeable future. It's a given. It's a historic structure. It also carries an enormous carbon footprint. In a future that I hope is more mindful of energy and resources, I feel it's our duty to do all that we can to make it serve the entire community in its greatest capacity. I've put together short lists of the reasons why either WashDOT or our Public Works Department has claimed that improvements are not feasible. I'm adding my own responses to each item in order to demonstrate that these aren't valid. First off, the UBIT, that's the underbridge inspection truck. That's the articulated boom that they reach through the truss to inspect the bridge. WashDOT has told us in the past that the articulated boom can only reach through a few portions of the frame along the Warren Truss, and that doing so requires a skilled operator. A higher guard rail on the water side and a wider sidewalk, which are improvements that we'd like to see, might make that more difficult. My response? Give us a skilled operator. Guard rail panels can be made removable, per my next comment. Two, a raised guard rail cannot be added to our bridge without extensive historic review. That was a WashDOT claim. My response? Design an extension to the railing that does not require permanent alteration of the bridge structure. This would work for both the truss and the concrete portions of the approach ramps. The excuse that historic review of this would take time doesn't hold water anymore because the project has already been on the table for years. I even offered my own design services for free to explore what that might look like. For some reason, I was cut out of that conversation. I might have been a little too nosy. I don't know. But I did take up that conversation with WashDOT Cultural Resources Program Supervisors and historians at the state and regional level enough to know that the concept is valid. Three, narrower traffic lanes conflict with the engineering standards under the City of Mount Vernon Comprehensive Plan. 12-foot lane width is what our engineering department is standing behind, to my understanding. My response, and as a member of the planning commission, we sometimes overlook things in the comp plan. It happens. This is existing, this bridge is existing constrained infrastructure. We're able to apply reason to the specific considerations of a design problem for the best overall outcome. Narrow lanes, naturally slow and calm traffic. 12-foot lanes are linked to increased crashes due to speed and carelessness through various studies. There's room on this bridge for 11-foot lanes, an 18-inch shy space, and a seven-foot sidewalk. If the sidewalk is built as a lightweight overlay, as WashDOT has shown us in the past, that's preserving the integral concrete curbs of the roadbed. Four, our Director of Public Works proposed, not throwing him under the bus, proposed that with narrower lanes, truck mirrors might strike pedestrians. In reality, Washington State standards mandates an 8.5-foot vehicle width, and federal standards dictate 10-inch mirror projections. Washington State mirror rules aren't dimensionally specific, but this is also the reason for the 18-inch shy space, which is the shy line between the lane edge and the sidewalk, a buffer, if you will. And finally, WashDOT says their snow plows are 12 feet wide. If I had to choose between the potential for pedestrian vehicle collision or a creative plowing solution for 520 linear feet of roadway, I'm sure I could come up with something. The biggest barrier to safety on the bridge is harder to design away, and that's human behavior. You've seen my proposal for sharos in the roadway, which is a common lane marking technique in green paint, such as what they use in Bellingham, to highlight shared traffic lanes and remind automobiles to look out for cyclists riding where the law requires them to ride. Additional signage leading up to the bridge and improved lighting on both sides that actually works is fundamental. I want to remind council also that we built a $54 million parking garage and library, and somehow approved a variance for a substandard sidewalk in front of it. We controlled the right-of-way, and we are the clients calling the shots in the design process of that building. That kind of oversight at the new cultural center of this city doesn't reflect well on our willingness, ability to understand and evaluate the pedestrian experience. Most WashDOT presentations about State Route 536 Bridge end with a request for recommendations for how to move forward. I feel the council should give them a determined answer. We can't plan this community entirely around far-off speculative state or federally funded projects. We need a sensible baseline plan to make our infrastructure safer when the opportunity is before us, as it is right now. Thank you. Thanks, Adair.
Hello.
Hi, Mayor and council members. I know a good couple of you anyway, and I was sitting out there, and staff. And I also can say probably WashDOT staff as well, because they're here and it's going to be in the agenda, I believe, right?
They are, yeah. And if you could state your name.
David Jobe, yeah. And I live at, I'm sorry. Yeah, I do have a name. David Jobe and I live at 512 Crested Butte Boulevard up in Skagit Highlands. And I come with my concern for 538 out here, College Way, because traveling that 3.6 miles to the east and then coming into the city 3.6 miles, there are a number of issues with trying to keep your car from jiggling too much. And I know that there is a repavement issue, I think, coming in 20, what is it, 2028?
We'll find out.
I found that online, anyway. But I would hope to see that that might be able to push up after this roadwork that's being done on College Way now to get that done as soon as possible. And I'll just, I'll just close. I am, we came up here 10 years ago, so we've been living up in Skagit Highlands for those many years. So we've traveled that road many times, this road out College Way. But I'm a minister, I was a minister, and I, you know, ministers, they never retire. They just go on to pastor. You got that. So I guess I'm considered as still a pastor, but I wanted to share something from my ministry. It's a prophecy that was made 700 B.C. by Isaiah the prophet before the person of Christ and the Godhead of Christ that came into the, into our living space. And the Isaiah, let's see if I can find it. Sometimes you're just, you know, you never can get it when you want it. Well, anyway, he talks about, I can't, yeah, it's kind of like running a technical report if you're trying to put the music out to people, and you just can't get it going. But anyway, the idea in Isaiah is that there was a prophecy for the coming of Christ. And he says to the people, he says, "Prepare the way and make the roads straight and bring up the valleys and bring down the mountains." So I kind of think it applies to the concept we're talking about. So I just leave that with you for what is worth. Thanks.
Thank you, David.
Good evening, Mayor and council, WashDOT representatives. My name is Ellen Gempson. I live in unincorporated Skagit County, right outside of Mount Vernon city limits. And I am the Executive Director of the Mount Vernon Downtown Association. And we're tonight to talk about the proposed repairs and repainting of the Highway 536 Bridge over to the west side. I cannot articulate any clearer or any better than Adair has the compelling rationale for taking this opportunity to make things right. I think most of you will remember that we have already experienced a human death from a wide-angle mirrors during my time in my role. So the current situation is already hazardous, and I don't, I have not heard every single report from WashDOT, but I was here at their last presentation. And it's just critical that we address this issue before any more human life is lost. We all know that the city is going to be experiencing major growth in population, and the risks are only going to increase exponentially as more traffic is passing over that bridge. And pedestrian safety is key. I also want to request or mention that this project, when it does finally begin, will have a significant impact on the downtown business district. I know that there's always short-term pain for long-term gain. Business folks, as well as residents, have been agitating or advocating for improvements to that bridge for quite some time. Nevertheless, I'm here to request frequent communication, any efforts at mitigation to the damages to the businesses in terms of the traffic pattern shifting, especially during the summer months where we see a lot of traffic over Highway 536 as it's the gateway to the San Juan Islands. And I know from personal experience that many folks take a break in the downtown, go to the co-op, stock up before they go out to catch the ferry or on their way back. And so that traffic pattern disruption is going to be significant. And I think, just want to request the partnership of both the city and the Department of Transportation in helping to mitigate that and offering my services as a conduit of information. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ellen. Anyone else like to address city council or WashDOT, I guess, at this point? Okay. We will move on to item four, which is tonight's consent agenda. It includes meeting minutes, payroll checks, wire transfers, claims, and an agreement. Council, would you like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Move to adopt the consent agenda.
Motion by Mary, a second by you. Do you have any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item five is our committee reports. Council held its monthly Public Works and Library meeting tonight at 6 o'clock, and Councilmember Mary Hudson chairs that and has a report for it.
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor stated, we met right before this meeting. We started off with the approval of the minutes, which we always do, but then we talked. Isaac Cuffman, our library director, gave us an update. He gave us an overview of the priorities for the library commons. The conference services are being added. Security is being refined. The art is being added, which is exciting, and the children's space is continuing to develop. And these priorities, we know, will increase revenue and connections to the community. The Mount Vernon commissary kitchen will finally open in the fall. Isaac gave us a review of the kitchen and how it will work for the public. The library is presenting rental rates for their view of the council with a target of approving the rates next month at the July 9th meeting. He also showed us some new photos showing where the work is at this year in the kitchen. Highlights from the summer programming plan include featured events and attendance records over 100 people at the Smokey Bear Storytime, where Smokey showed up by Alhena's Own. And we're also, the holds locker that we have outside is finally available for the public. So that's, that's all good news. Next up, we had Director Phillips present to us about the Mount Vernon Lake Berry Commons project. It's continually on our agenda. It's not quite all done, but we're really getting close. The director provided an overview of the project that included in-depth discussions on the three temporary certificates of occupancy, the certificate of occupancy, and the substantially complete letter. And if you haven't done a project, well, none of us have done a project of this magnitude, but if you haven't done a project, those are all things that can happen and, and kind of normal course of business, I believe. Talked about the punch list and warranty items and their impact on the project cost and contract amendments. Then we had a little bit of time left for Blaine to talk to us about the Little Mountain Cell Tower. Ivy County 911 is looking to extend the Eastern Little Mountain Tower to improve emergency services by adding some equipment. For those of you that don't know, that we do have two towers up there right now. The Little Mountain, the tower they're talking about is the newer tower that was added. The proposed extension will also include adding associated equipment from the MVPD, Public Works, and Skagit County 911. Talked about the 2025 detention pond maintenance. Our drainage facility maintenance program is currently in good condition. The Streets Division has two seasonal staff for the first time since 2019. And the Washington Conversation Corps has up to five weeks of crew time available for the city, which is really great. It was a little bit significantly less last year, so we're very excited about that. We're in the design of our Park Street Pump Station upgrade. It's 90 years old, and it needs to be redesigned and replaced. HDR Incorporated had been selected for the Park Street Pump Station Final Design and Engineering Services Contract. The cost of the services will be around $566,000, and the final design will be complete during the summer of 2026. I'm so thankful for the notes they give me so I can actually listen to their presentations. Next up was the Seneca Drive Culvert Debris Removal. The Seneca Drive Culvert and Thunderbird Creek debris removal project is in the permitting process. And once the permitting is completed, the plan is to clean the channel and culvert later this summer. We do have a fish window that we have to abide by, so that always factors into those kinds of projects. And then the last piece he talked to us about was the Skagit Fisheries Enhancement Group. We've been collaborating with them on the Riparian Restoration Project located on the city property between the wastewater treatment plant and the Skagit River. Their staff are currently scheduled to mow and place mulch between the plantings on Thursday, June 12. And then we gave Frank Reinhardt about five minutes to give us a lot of information. First thing he talked about was the Lucha Road widening. We finally been given the go-ahead, the State Transportation Improvement Board approved final design for Invitation for Bids. The invitation was advertised starting June 4th and with a scheduled bid opening of June 25th. And the staff and trip anticipates bringing us a contract back on July 9th. And the project team continues to coordinate with the transmission pole relocation needed with PSC this summer. Also talked about the Riverside Improvements 1 and 2. City staff continues to negotiate the professional services agreements for both of the design projects. Some of the challenges that we're running up against are there's new federal contracting requirements from December 2024, and it's hard to bring in a new design company middle of the project that we'd started. So there's, there's that whole learning, learning curve that we are anticipating. WashDOT local programs must approve both agreements and related requirements, and then they'll come back to us, the council. Let's see, the local programs is currently backlogged on reviews and approvals due to staffing limits and the end of, and the end of the state physical biennium on June 30th. And the staff and consulting team goal is to bring recommendations to authorize execution of the services, professional services agreement to us at the July 23rd regular meeting. Also talked about 30th Street improvements, the design. On June 10th, the project team received notice that the long-delayed Endangered Species Act review by federal agencies has begun. And we will update, we will get an update delivery schedule once, once initial review feedback is received from the federal agencies and WashDOT. Pavement preservation planning, city staff are finishing SOQ reviews this week, and will begin contract negotiations with the highest scoring consultant next week. And the staff anticipate bringing a professional service agreement to the council on July 9th at our regular meeting. And the last one he talked about was the ADA Transition Plan Update. The next steps are the city website updates and updated internal staff procedures to make it a more lean procedure all around. And then the project team is beginning to require, the required asset inventory, which includes pedestrian ramps, which are typically four to eight per intersection. Plus, there are some in the mid-block, in the mid-block areas, and then pedestrian push-button locations. And the staff anticipates bringing an ADA program informational presentation to city council in late summer or early fall. And we adjourned at 7:00 tonight.
Thank you, Mary. Last week, you all had your Public Safety Committee and Councilmember Norris Tercero chairs that. He's out today. Is anyone covering the report?
I am.
Great.
Get me again. So sorry.
Back to Mary for a recap of the Public Safety Committee.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. Let's see. We, what did we do? We met last, we met last Wednesday at 6:00. This was a long meeting. We were here till 9:00. So you've got, I've got a lot of things to talk about. Fire was first. Fire Department was updated. We had a presentation from Chief Harris. We got a medical, a medical unit grant award. The department received it, an H. House Bill 1168 grant in the amount of almost $15,000 to be used to purchase tools, a portable pump kit, and a Smokey Bear fire danger sign. And this is all going to be placed at Fire Station 3. Chief Harris also talked about the SAFER Grant application. He discussed our current staffing, staffing requirements, and overtime. Impacts to the vulnerable, vulnerable population response times and capability were also addressed. He presented two hiring options to the council. Option one was hire six new positions, three firefighters, two firefighter, I don't know how, six positions, three firefighters, three firefighter paramedics. Or option two, hire nine new positions, six firefighters, three firefighter paramedics. Option one would make it less likely that the city would receive the SAFER Grant because option two would meet the IAFF 1710 staffing guidelines. And let's see, we talked about the regional fire authority. We're talking about that now here at council. Chief also reported that he and the mayor went and met with the Burlington Mayor and Fire Chief about the possibility of a partnership of the cities and Skagit County Fire District 1 to form an RFA. And the next step is to hire a consultant to complete an RFA fiscal analysis. The cost of the consultant would be shared by Mount Vernon, Burlington, and Fire District 1. Next up was the Police Department. Chief Chrisman and Lieutenant Moore reviewed current staff, current staffing, the ratio of officers to residents, and the effect on police services. Minimum staffing requirements and the impacts to traffic patrol, public education, priority policing, special operations, and command staff were presented. A proposed plan to hire three additional officers over the next three years, including higher time and costs, were discussed. Next up, we had a presentation by Steve Sexton about the proposed public defense caseload standards and budgetary impact. We were given a presentation that talked about proposed changes in the way our indigent defense is managed in each city. Each city does this. And the Bar Association, I believe, if I'm saying this correctly, was wanting to take the number of cases that each attorney could handle and make them smaller every year on a stepping scale, on a sliding scale. We were, we were a little bit surprised. Well, I guess not a little bit. We were very surprised to learn that although we do know that currently we pay $562,000 a year for public defense services, the requirements that they had proposed and that the Supreme Court was looking at would increase the city's financial obligation to an estimated $2.7 million annually by 2028. So that was quite a shock to all of us. I do know that that was changed a little, the Supreme Court adopted part of it, but not all of it, and it's a longer term. So anyway, I'm sorry I'm not explaining it very well, but I think I hit many of the high points, and we will be discussing that in the future again. Lastly, well, one of the last things we talked about was our Finance Director, Doug Valeski, came up and talked about 2026 funding options. He reviewed historical data on budget, revenues, expenses, and fund reserves. We talked about grant opportunities, including the SAFER Grant and the COPS Grant, which are both for, one is for fire, one is for police, and various development services grants that we could try to get to assist with our budgetary shortfalls. The city rate and fee schedules are, will be evaluated annually. And we talked about a couple of different tax-based revenue opportunities. One was a property tax levy lift, which would fund specifically parks and public safety. We would need to determine a levying amount, and then the staff would have to create a plan, basically a six-year plan, and submit the documentation to Skagit County for it to be on the. basically a six-year plan, and submit the documentation to Skagit County for it to be on the fall ballot. Um, we had, uh, council heard from both chiefs and Director Burner about their needs, which, so that does include parks, fire, and police. Um, the council agreed to allow staff to begin developing a six-year plan to move forward with getting it on the ballot. So that will come back to us, um, as it, as it progresses. Well, we do have a short timeline to get that ready to go. Talked about a BNO tax, which would be assessed to businesses grossing a certain annual amount, such as a million dollars a year. Um, the city staff would have to track bill and collect that tax. And then sales tax authorization. Uh, House Bill two thousand and fifteen, which was passed this, just this legislative session, authorized the cities to assess a point one, point oh-one sales tax for criminal justice support. This would yield an estimated one-point-two annually and may be used to offset upcoming public defense mandates, like the one I just, uh, discussed earlier. This is implemented without voter action, but we may only impose the tax if it qualifies for the local law enforcement grant program. Chief Christman reviewed the mandatory criteria used to qualify for the program and identified where the department is in with each item, and it would take some time for us to get, um, ready to go forward with that. Uh, and the staff will continue to bring us information about all of the rev- revenue generating options. We also talked about Stokely Tower. Um, Doug talked about the fact that the repainting project was originally supposed to be ARP offended. However, the mayor redact- redirected the funds to existing contracts, which created general fund savings of five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So the, we were given, um, four options for the use of the savings, the five hundred and twenty-two thousand. Number one was for the Stokely Tower. Number one was to proceed with the project. Number two was to build financial reserves. Number three A was to renovate the old library building and sell our public works building. Or number three B was to renovate the old library building, convert the current public works building into rental property. The staff recommended three B, and council, we discussed the options and then directed the staff to move forward with option three B. And we adjourned our meeting at nine oh-one. That's it. I am ta- done talking tonight.
We need you to keep talking, maybe.
Oh, no, I'm done.
But no more reports.
Uh-uh.
Got it. Item five B is council member comments. I'm guessing Councilmember Hudson's gonna take a pass on that.
No, actually, I have.
Oh, you've got something else, good. Um, any council member comments? Yeah, Councilmember Broxman.
So we were, several of us were at, um, all-day meetings last week. Um, one with North Star. I'm, I'm not gonna share more on that, but I was able to attend another, um, it was called the Flood, Skagit Flood Modeling Workshop. And that was hosted by, uh, Swanamish Indian Tribal Community in the Skagit Climate Science Consortium. Our planning staff was there. Thank you, um, for sending them. Um, I was disappointed not to see, um, any flood planners there from the county or the Dyke District. So, um, that is a concern to me. But, um, it was a great, uh, dialogue, and I think it's important that, um, we all continue to keep an eye on, um, essentially, climate change-induced flooding in the valley. And there was some good news, um, for the city that I want to share, and, um, also some, some, you know, bad news that we all need to be prepared for. Um, but essentially, um, this is a, a grant-funded, um, modeling effort that, um, looked at, uh, you know, rainfall and the effect of climate change and how that's gonna affect flooding in the valley coming forward. And, um, they essentially look over long-time scales, and essentially, one of the conclusions was that by the year two thousand and eighty, we expect about a forty-nine percent increase in the maximum flood heights in the Skagit River. Um, and, uh, with the additional, uh, flood storage provided at, uh, Seattle's, uh, Ross Dam, if those agreements go through, um, that number does drop, but drops to forty-two percent. So even with better flood storage upstream, we're still expecting forty percent bigger floods um, in, uh, you know, towards the end of the century. And what that means for folks in another way is that, um, these, uh, floods that we see today and expect happen, uh, over different frequencies will happen four to five times more frequently in the future. Um, so that's something that a flood planner should be, uh, looking at and individuals should be looking at, and there's lots of ways to start to address that. Um, so that's the scary news. The good news is they actually looked at what those floods would do, given our current, um, uh, levy structures across, uh, the valley. And I gotta say that in the city of Mount Vernon, um, we fared really well, um, given what they would predict those models look like. And that's a big testament to our Dyke Districts. We have a Dyke District on our north end, on West Mount Vernon, and in South Mount Vernon. So I think there's three in, um, our city, and, um, they have been working on these flood protections for decades and decades. And, um, the, uh, flood wall that our city staff, um, worked on, um, and has now completed was, uh, the, one of the biggest reasons why, um, this new flood modeling effort, which was sort of the, you know, latest, greatest, most technical, um, advanced modeling that we've seen in the valley, um, showed, uh, you know, a dry downtown underneath, uh, under these conditions that were predicted, even at a hundred-year flood coming into the future. Um, so that was really great news. Um, there were, um, three areas, um, where we could use improvement. One of them was, uh, North Mount Vernon, one of them was, uh, West Mount Vernon, and one of them was South Mount Vernon. And so it feels like, um, there's room for some discussion, um, with our, uh, the partners who are responsible for this work. Um, because our job is to make sure that we're putting in every effort we can to provide, uh, life, health, and safety for our residents, especially as we're looking at conferency planning, where there's a lot of dialogue about adding additional density to infill in our city, um, to make our city more livable and walkable. Um, and, uh, we need to know that we're putting that in places where people are safe. So, um, that is why I've been asking for many years now to have this dialogue about what is remaining to be done and what the city's, um, opportunities are to support those Dyke Districts who have this responsibility, and why I'm disappointed that when we asked them to come last month, they refused to, to show up. So I think that the s- in this valley, there's a lot of opportunity for us to improve, um, how we work together. And, you know, to, I, I'm sure I'm at fault for some of that. I'm gonna commit to doing the best I can, but I just wanted to put this on everybody's radar, that, um, these are things we ought to be working on together, and it doesn't do any good if we don't go to each other's meetings and learn from each other. So that's my soapbox.
Thank you, Mr. Hugh. You wanna? Mary.
Do you wanna go, Eric?
Yes, of course.
I have two things. First of all, I wanna, I wanna shout out and say congratulations to the graduates. Was that what you were gonna say? Well, you can say more.
No, go ahead.
Um, Iris and I would like to say, congratulations. Um, really bummed that we couldn't be at the graduation parade, but I understand camp scheduling conflicts and everything, so just very proud of, of the graduating seniors. I cannot think of one that I know this year out of Mount Vernon, but I do know that Councilmember Molinar's grandson is graduating from Burlington High School this year, Cody. So congratulations to Cody. And a, a former, um, employer's daughter, Finley, is graduating from Stanwood High School, so congratulations to Finley. And the other thing, Navor asked me actually to pass this along. This is a very bad picture of a bear. Uh, it's about four feet tall, and it was stolen, um, from a house here in Mount Vernon in the four-hundred block of Twenty-Eighth Street. This bear has a, quite a history. Um, the lady who owns it, her husband felled the tree and carved this bear for her, and she has been decorating it, um, seasonally for over thirty years. And someone decided that they needed it more than she did. So I know it's been posted on social media. I'm just taking this opportunity to say, anybody who might be watching tonight, please keep your eyes peeled for this, and it needs to be returned to her because it's, it was a labor of love from her husband, and he's no longer with us. And so I just feel like somebody needs to be held accountable, and please return the bear. Thank you.
Is there any chance we can get, uh, TV ten to zoom in on that image for, uh, for a second?
The bad image.
What do you think? Can we, can we get that shot, Lori?
Hmm, too, too short of notice. Next time.
Too short of notice.
We'll get it next time.
I have it if you need it, Lori. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Mm-hmm.
Need it.
Oh, um, yes, I just would like to, uh, congratulate all the students in Man- uh, Mount Vernon School District. They're going to graduate tomorrow. Mostly for those student, they came to, they've been involved, uh, doing community work, volunteer, as in Q ones. And we had this year, uh, many scholarship, thirteen, Richard.
How many?
Thirteen, we have.
Thirteen?
Yeah.
Plus hopefully six more.
Yes, probably, you know, and, uh, we would like to say congratulations, good dogs. You've done a great job. You work hard for your scholarship and just wishing them the best in college. Um, hope to see you back in the community and continue serving the community young generation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other council member comments for the mayor's report? All right. For mayor's report tonight, uh, as Steve gets that, uh, show up there, I just wanna invite everyone to come to a barn. Um, there is a, and we've had mayor's coffee at, at restaurants. We've had it at art galleries. We had it at a bar once. I, I feel like we're ready for a barn tour. Um, we're gonna have, uh, mayor's coffee at the Skagit County Fairgrounds. So, uh, I hope you can make it there. That's next Tuesday, June seventeenth at ten AM. And if you're not familiar with the Skagit County Fairgrounds, you just, you enter in the address there, fourteen-ten Virginia Street. And to your phone navigation, that's gonna get you to the north gate of the fairgrounds. There's a parking lot there marked ABC Parking, uh, just inside the gate. You park there. There'll be a guy there. You need to ask? No, you, there's nothing special you need to do. Just go to the entrance of the B Building. Um, it's complicated, but it's on our city website, and it's simple there. So go to our city website, uh, on the front page, just scroll down a little bit. Mayor's Coffee, click right there. We got a map for you. We have directions. Uh, we hope you can find us at the Skagit County Fairgrounds. Bring whatever questions you have that are city-related. We try to get as, uh, cover as much territory as we can in that one hour. Uh, but all are welcome, June seventeenth at ten AM. That's next Tuesday. Um, okay, on the next slide, we're, we're gonna, we're getting close to the Fourth of July, and you're gonna be hearing quite a bit of messaging from the city leading up to the Fourth of July because there's been a change in the law, and it took effect last November. And so now it is completely illegal to buy, sell, or discharge any fireworks. So safe, sane, unsafe, insane, uh, fireworks, can't have them, can't, uh, discharge those in Mount Vernon city limits. Um, telling you this to help you avoid a penalty of up to a thousand dollars per offense. Um, to help get the word out, our police and fire departments have started an information campaign. So I'd like to debut their public service announcement video here tonight. It's on the next slide. We're gonna try this. Uh, this is a world premiere of this video. I think it's on the.
Hello, I'm Ricardo Melmas with the Mount Vernon Fire Department.
And I'm Sergeant Walter Martinez with the Mount Vernon Police Department. Thanks for taking a moment to hear this important message.
As we get closer to the Fourth of July, we want to remind everyone that fireworks are banned within Mount Vernon city limits. This isn't just about noise. This is about safety. Over the last few years, our city council has carefully reviewed the impact of fireworks on our neighborhoods. And the data is clear. The risks are real.
Last year, if citizens suffer serious injuries in a fireworks accident, we also have multiple vegetation fires in residential areas caused by fireworks. These incidents could have easily turned into much larger emergencies.
These are preventable incidents. That's why our city made the decision to ban fireworks, to protect people, homes, pets, and first responders.
If you're caught using, selling fireworks within city limits, you could face fines up to one thousand dollars and possible misdemeanor charges. Join us for the fabulous Fourth of July fireworks show, a good time for the entire family.
The spectacular fireworks display begins at dark, and Edgewater Park is the perfect spot to enjoy it all.
There's plenty of space to spread out, relax with your family, and enjoy the best view in town for a safe, professional fireworks show.
Let's celebrate responsibly and let the professionals handle the fireworks.
If you see illegal fireworks being used, report it to your non-emergency line. Your call could prevent a fire, an injury, or worse.
Celebrate smart, celebrate safe, celebrate together.
All right, well, thanks to Mount Vernon Police, Mount Vernon Fire, for putting that messaging out. Uh, I, look, I kinda like fireworks, and so this is tough. This is a difficult, uh, thing for me. I, I think fireworks are fun, but as you can see, um, or maybe not see now, um, it was on the slide. There was a, a photo on the slide of a, of a home that burned down, uh, in, boy, what was that, twenty-twenty-three, I believe, here in Mount Vernon, from fireworks. It, it's, the, the damage that they can do often does outweigh the entertainment value of fireworks. So we should absolutely leave fireworks up to the experts this year. Um, and that's why the city is, again, hosting a really nice professional fireworks show down in Edgewater Park on July fourth. The park will be open at eight PM, and the show begins around ten PM. So bring your family, bring your lawn chairs, come hang out and celebrate with us. Uh, on the Fourth of July, we hope to see you all down there. And that is your mayor's report for June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five. So we're gonna jump over now to new business. And item A in new business is an update from Washington State Department of Transportation. Uh, there are a lot of folks in Mount Vernon, I have found, who are surprised to learn that College Way and Memorial Highway, uh, are technically called State Route five-thirty-eight, State Route five-thirty-six, respectively. Both of those are governed, maintained by Wash Dot. And tonight, uh, our Public Works Director Chris Phillips is going to introduce our guest for us. Chris?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Chris, come on up. So, uh, council and mayor, citizens in the back there, this is Chris Demascio. He happens to be the, uh, director for the Northwest Region here for Wash Dot, uh, which basically is Island County, Skagit, and Wacom County. Uh, again, I just wanna point out to everybody that Chris, just like me, is, is a good working bureaucrat for, for the state. I happen to be for the city. Uh, he is not an elected official or an appropriator. Again, he, he answers to the Director of Transportation for that. But again, uh, Chris has got big shoulders, and he is ready to take on any questions that the council may have, uh, or the mayor regarding that. And Chris, without further ado, the floor is yours, sir.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Do I run the, uh, PowerPoint?
Yeah. All you have to do is just.
Sounds great.
You got it.
Well, thank you. And again, my name's Chris Demascio, and I'm, uh, Assistant Regional Administrator for the Department of Transportation here in the Mount Baker area, Skagit County. And, um, I'll be providing you with a quick update on our overall program as well as updates for the city of Mount Vernon. So, uh, we'll be talking a little bit about preservation, our fish program, and then, of course, the, uh, bridge painter. So let me start by talking about our preservation program. Preservation addresses taking care of the assets in our system, like pavement and bridges. In the department, we call this our state of good repair. It's been estimated that we are about nine hundred and eighty million dollars behind in funding where we need to be for our highway assets. Much like your house, you can put off painting the exterior or re-roofing, but every year that we don't, that we do put it off, the cost is gonna go up, and the risk of failure of the system becomes greater. And this is where our state of good repair is at today. We need about a billion and a half dollars each year to maintain and protect the assets we have. In this current session, we've been allocated about four hundred and fifty million a year for the preservation program. So preservation, maintenance go hand in hand. Decades of underfunding and adding more capacity to a system without dedicated funding has led us to where we're at today. And that means the state highways in Skagit County compete with other highways around the state for that funding that is available. In short, nearly fifty percent of the state highways are overdue for significant preservation work and are not funded for the recommended long-term restoration that's really necessary. And just as a little point of fact, nearly forty-three percent of our state pavement striping is considered deficient. I think we've all driven at night in the rain and probably would agree with that. And again, these, these dots that are on the map all show areas, uh, bridges and pavements that are all due for need. that are all due for need, doesn't mean we're funding them, doesn't need, we're fixing them, but they need it. So, now let's move to the good news. The good news is College Way SR five thirty-eight is programmed for a preservation effort. Uh, Leeway to SR nine, uh, is scheduled for construction in twenty-nine. And again, we'll start, uh, design work on that probably any month now and start working with staff on, uh, how to collaborate and create some great enhancements through this corridor. Let's talk a little bit about the fish program we have, and probably everyone is very familiar with our fish program, we've talked a lot about it. We continue to deliver fish passage projects subject to the federal injunction that we're working under. This map shows the barriers in Skagit County, with green being those that we've corrected and the red and brown being those that we have not yet corrected. To date, the legislature's authorized about five billion dollars for the fish program. In the twenty-five twenty-seven budget, the total increase to the program over six years is about one billion dollars, but most of that billion dollars is already allocated or, uh, focused on work that we're already doing. Um, work like south of town on the Secret Creek Project on Interstate five or north of town on the Fish, uh, Fish Creek Project. So, most of our focus right now is going to be on design efforts. So, likely, where you've seen a lot of, uh, us turning dirt on the fish efforts recently, probably starting in twenty-six, you're gonna see not as much work, and we're gonna be focusing insight on the designs more until we can get additional funding allocated to the program. To date, we've corrected about a hundred and seventy-six barriers, and that's about fifty-five percent of the total we're shooting for, for the twenty-thirty need. Um, and as I noted, two of the ones that you're probably seeing a lot of in your travels are south and north of Mount Vernon on Interstate five at, uh, Fish Creek and Secret Creek. Uh, one location that I want to make you aware of too, that we are working diligently on is the Martha and Maddox Creek Complex, south of town at the Anderson Interchange. Right now, we're, we're working toward, uh, having that ready for construction in twenty-twenty-six, but it's not currently funded. But, um, that's gonna take two five-foot culverts, two existing five-foot culverts, and convert those to about twenty-foot wide culverts. So, hopefully that'll be ready for construction in twenty-six, if we can find the money for it. So, let's move to the five thirty-six bridge, the Skagit River Bridge. Um, and as I said before, like painting your house, the primary purpose of this effort is to protect the structural integrity of the bridge. This seven million dollar project is aimed at expand, extending the life of the vital bridge, which carries approximately eighteen thousand vehicles a day, uh, both in the westbound and eastbound directions. We expect it to take about twelve months of work to get this done, so yes, there may have to be a break over the winter and then continue work the, the following year. This bridge was built in about nineteen fifty-three and has been repainted a few times and most recently in nineteen ninety-five. Historical practices included the use of lead paint. Uh, and so for this effort, we need to remove all the paint, and while we never want anything to, to ever escape our containment or our, or, as we're removing, especially with lead paint, we cannot let anything escape that containment. So, as shown, the debris removal happens by erecting a secondary structure, a tent that allows us to contain and collect all the debris we're creating. This containment limit, limits the width and thus the traffic that we can put on the bridge. So, with that, let me talk a little bit about our traffic control strategies, what we propose to do with traffic during the work. So, initially, uh, what we had proposed was that, what our modeling showed was that we're going to have to use signals there to control traffic and, and one lane of traffic, and even with those signals, the backups were going to be severe in the, especially in the downtown area. So, with that, what we proposed was one-way traffic westbound, um, with about a ten-mile detour in the eastbound direction, and that would be twenty-four seven, all day long, all through the duration of the project. And we know that's tough, but, um, we, the backups that we were projecting downtown were just too severe. Um, as we talked to the community, as we talked to the city, what became apparent was with Washington Elementary right there, this was gonna create quite a hardship in that, uh, for the students and parents at Washington Elementary. So, in discussing with the city and the school, what we are now proposing is that we will allow for two one-hour periods, one in the morning, one in the evening, to allow for school traffic to have, to go both ways. We'll be controlling that with the signals and everything, and again, it will still create, impacts in the downtown area, but we think that, um, providing for the school need i- is so important, um, and the ability of, of parents and children to move, uh, well. So, right now, this is our proposal, is that we would allow for one hour, um, one hour morning, one hour night, um, during the school days, not on the weekends, not, uh, out of school, but just during those two periods, because again, we do think that the backups are still going to be severe even during those one-hour periods. So, the last topic I wanted to share was our investigation of active transportation or complete streets, and I wanted to talk a little bit about the options we looked at and the opportunities we looked at related to this bridge. In collaboration with city staff, we worked hard to see if there were opportunities to make this bridge safer for active users. One of the things that you, that needs to be understood is the constraints that we're working under. This is a navigable stream, I think as, um, Chris has mentioned previously, we did a lot of study, and Chris, I think that Chris Phillips did a lot of study, there's no way around it, this is a navigable stream. And so with that, we have to maintain that ability, that bridge to open. And granted, we have a one-year window to get that done, we have to be able to get that bridge open. And so that's just a given. And so with that said, anything that happens has to be, um, structurally analyzed to make sure that the weight distribution is adequate, has to be structurally analyzed to make sure that the widths don't hinder that ability to open that bridge with that one-year notice. Inspection needs need to be considered and make sure we can still, anything that happens, that we can still inspect that bridge. Maintenance activities need to be considered in whatever happens. And then again, the historical, uh, aspects related to this bridge need to be considered in anything that happens. With that said, we looked at so many options and so many different things that, um, had potential, we hoped had potential, looked at a multitude of options, but for one reason or another, none were deemed feasible. Um, you know, and again, some of the things we looked at, speed reductions, uh, dividers, but again, none were de- deemed feasible. Um, and given the existing footprint of the bridge, it really made the addition of the, uh, active transportation elements not feasible at this time. So, uh, at this time, we continue to focus on preserving and maintaining the bridge we have. We understand that this bridge is important to the city, and that's why we are progressing with what we have funding for, which is the painting, and doing it a way that delivers the project in the safest and most efficient manner possible. The legislature, while asking us to consider active transportation, provided no additional resources for us to do that. Um, and we did not find any feasible transportation enhancements, uh, that could be made at this time. We know how important those type of enhancements are though to you, and so I continue to work with my leadership, the DOT, and with the city to find additional funding so that we can do a more in-depth structural analysis to determine viable, fundable options. Opportunities like removable extensions may be an option, but until we can look at that and analyze it structurally, we just don't know what, uh, what's possible with all of that. So, um, just a reminder to please stay in touch with us, stay in touch with the Department of Transportation, a lot of different opportunities, uh, whether through Facebook newsletters, uh, Twitter, and, uh, with the QR codes. So, with that, I'm ready to take on any questions.
Thanks, Chris. Council, any questions for?
Um, yeah, actually, I'll start, although I thought I was done talking, but, okay, you, you get it. On the, I'm gonna start with the College Way. Okay. You're, you're saying that it's going to be repaved in twenty twenty-nine, is that correct? Did I get that right? So, right now, we get to live with it the way it is, is there any, like, short-term? Can we fix some areas? I mean, because I don't know if you've, how often you've driven on it, or, you know, it's awful, it's like knock your feelings out awful? And, um, I, it's, it's unacceptable, um, to me, and it's unacceptable to the citizens that use it. So, I'm just looking for, is there something that can be done short-term to help us out some?
We are monitoring it, and if maintenance needs need to happen in the interim, we're certainly, um, be monitoring that if, uh, if it becomes undrivable. But as I opened up with, our preservation program is just, it's not there, it's not where we want it to be. And I don't disagree at all with you, it's, uh, College Way SR five thirty-eight is not where we want it to be, but, um, higher, uh, roads that have higher speeds or higher volumes, we're competing against those kind of preservation efforts and, but we, we have our maintenance forces who are just wonderful at what they do, and they are monitoring, and when it does, sad to say, get out of hand, we do have maintenance opportunities to, um, correct the worst of the worst.
I know that the city has, um, some paving, uh, capability. Um, is there any, and I, I'm not trying to speak for them, but is there any way that WashDOT could work with the city, perhaps, if there was something critical that they could, the city could jump in faster and have the time and ability to do it? Do you guys partner like that? Does that make sense?
We, yeah, no, we, uh, we partner all the time when the opportunity exists. The challenge here is that, um, the money in our preservation program, when I say twenty-nine, that money isn't there until twenty-nine.
Gotcha.
And so, if you had the ability to pave it next year, that money, we don't have it
You don't have it.
in our, in our bank.
I, I, I hear ya.
Forward, and that's the challenge. Now, on a day-to-day basis, if, um, you were to call up, if the city were to call up and say, hey, we've got some situations here, do you mind if we take care of it? And you refund us the maintenance or pay us, but we can certainly look at those opportunities for small maintenance activities, but typically, I think we're pretty active in that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mary, I, I actually haven't driven the road with that specific question in mind in a while. Are there, one that keeps coming up for me is the, uh, little bridge, uh, next to the car wash and just how bad it is just down the street here.
Over the railroad track?
Um.
Are you talking?
This is closer to like, uh, Papa Murphy's and, uh... Yeah.
Down that way.
In the low point on.
Yeah, there's just the, the pavement is really broken up, lots of potholes. And so, I guess my, my question was gonna be, are there like three or four locations that are just horrible that we could get fixed tempor- I mean, initially? If we can identify those spots, is that something that you could take a look at?
Yeah.
We can't get the whole road done.
Right.
That's what it sounds like, but I know there's, it's a few bad spots that are horrible sometimes.
Yeah, if you want to send, uh, Chris Phillips a note on where those are, and as I said, we're taking a look at it constantly, our maintenance forces, but, yeah, if you want to send those locations, we can take a special look at that and see if there's, uh, anything we can do in the interim.
Andrew.
Hey, uh, thanks for coming today. Um, Adair, uh, I was gonna give you the opportunity to just bring up your list, uh, but I'm just gonna let you think about it for a second, and no pressure, because I got two in, in the meantime, um, because I couldn't articulate your list as well as you did. Um, when's the next time the, uh, truck's coming through, uh, for the inspection?
For the bridge inspection? I would, I think it's at least every two years they look at it, maybe annually. I, I would be guessing though, but I think it's every, at least every two years they come through.
I would be really interested in actually knowing when.
Yeah.
Just, just to actually look at the inspection, um, the picture you provided. I have, you know, not somebody who operates one of those, but I have operated boom lifts for, I don't know, twelve years now or something, I'd be curious just to see what the process looks like.
Yeah.
And I'm a visual learner, so I think that'd be interesting. And I was, uh, other question if I may, um, uh, how often is the bridge supposed to be painted?
Again, part of our preservation program, I'm gonna say about every fifteen years, we're supposed to get in there, almost like your house. Um, but with the preservation program the way it is, we're not getting in there as often as we need to.
Yeah, it's a bit of a, um, it's nice because there's less disruption, uh, because we're not painting as often, um, but if there ever is a time where we do get to paint more often, what a shame that this is such a, such a complicated process that takes the bridge out of commission for so long. Seems like there should be, or not should be, but it would be nice if there was a longer-term plan for how, how do we preserve something, how do we make it accommodated so it can be painted, um, but it's not disrupting the city for, uh, a calendar year at a time. Is it, do you have any comments around that, any?
Well, the, the structure itself is very unique, being a steel truss and then a swing span at that. You don't see a lot of those anymore. Um, the width is very unique, um, and so, uh, truss bridges, older, the width is unique. Um, if, and the unique thing for me as an engineer about truss bridges, they are easy to maintain as long as you keep them painted. You can see where any challenges lie, you can fix those challenges. If a member is, is going bad, you can see it and you can fix it, so they're very easy to maintain. And you can look at the Deception Bridge, which is approaching a hundred years. Um, a concrete bridge on the other end, you really can't see where, um, problems may lie, and so at about fifty to seventy years, we have to replace it. So, most of your concrete bridges are a little bit wider because they're newer. The truss bridges are narrower because they tend to be a little bit older. Um, and as we, you'll never see a bridge made that narrow, uh, today. And so, yeah, we're, we live and learn sadly, and so we've learned our lesson about narrow bridges and the challenges they create.
I appreciate that. Just a, uh, it's a fascinating thing where we, uh, doesn't seem like we really have an option here. We're kind of forced to stick with this bridge, and it feels like we're a little bit captured, like we don't really have any sort of alternates. It's a real shame, um, that there's not something at all to be done. Seems unlikely in this wonderful world with technology like it is and how sophisticated we are and, um, yeah, it just, yeah, that just seems, I don't know, a, a little bit unbelievable to me.
It's, keep in mind too, that when we talk about, the painting is part of that preservation story I told. And so that money is, and you're probably very familiar, but that money is coming out of that preservation pot. To look at a new bridge is a completely different pot of money, which again, the legislature has not provided us any funding for. And so that, again, as we compete against, um, bridges that have higher speeds, if we compete against bridges that have higher, um, uh, traffic volumes, uh, we're looking at that, in the news recently has been the Carbon River Bridge down toward Mount Rainier. And so, you know, where's that money gonna come from but the new bridge funding? And so that's the challenge here, is preservation money and painting is one thing, a new bridge, it comes out of a completely different legislatively allocated fund.
Yeah, one more follow-up and then I promise I'm done with my day.
No, great questions, thank you.
Oh, and, uh, I appreciate, I, I know, I hope that you get paid very well to deal with people like me. Very sorry, but you, you're the person who comes, so thank you for that. Um, if I was to say that this is like an unbelievable situation, and I'm, I'm looking to, I'm a proactive, I'm an optimist, and I want to see something change, is there something that you can recommend that this city does, that this council does, to help facilitate that change? What can I do, starting tomorrow, to help get something done? And if I have to turn off the cameras, just let me know.
I guess the challenge that, that I have in this role is, I am very disappointed that I can't provide more for you in the way of complete streets, that, um, I've been mandated to come talk to you about complete streets, if you will, legislatively, but I've been provided no dollars to do that. And that's, I think some great ideas have come out, I disagree, I, I agree completely that to provide for, uh, a safer active use of that bridge is wonderful, and that's where, I guess, my frustration lies, I don't know where to find that money.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and thank you for enduring the, uh, the questions to the council and to everybody.
Councilmember Bronson.
Um, so, uh, and I, I'm, I thought you were going down the road of, in today's society, we can engineer anything, uh, and it feels like we can engineer anything, and I, I'll admit, I have not dove into this topic in a few months, so I don't remember all the details, I'd have to refresh it, but I just do not believe that we cannot do this. And so, uh, I had suggested that we partner with DOT, we set aside funding, and we, um, spend the time to find out what the solution is, because we are living with this bridge Because we are living with this bridge for decades to come without an alternative. And it is totally unacceptable the way it is. And we all know that and we agreed that we have to figure out how to get there. And I, I still believe that there are engineering solutions to this problem. And I know you've run through yours and it, this may take longer, but it, it feels like while you're in this design phase and moving into construction, maybe you can't, don't have the budget to afford to implement it. But you have resources that you could partner with us and we could find a different approach, a different set of engineers who can look at this, if it's not internal to DOT, I don't know what the solution is, but external to DOT. And beat this thing to the ground till we find a solution. I don't know why, if it's, you know, have to inspect it every two years, well, then we take the damn thing off every two years and we put it back on. I don't know what the solution is, but we should investigate every possible resource to find the engineering solution. And then know that we haven't agreed on solution and we'll work on getting funding later, but we first have to have a solution. There's gotta be a solution to this problem.
Well, that's, that's a wonderful comment and I, I agree with you completely. And I'm not saying that any of these things that have been come up with are not feasible. But at the next step is we really need to look at the engineering feasibility of them and study whether or not the bridge can handle or how the bridge can handle these enhancements to the, you know, I, I think the last time we were, you talked about the attachments. So that thought was very unique. So how do we make that happen and how do we get the, make sure that the bridge can handle that situation? And then we don't make any changes that hinder its ability to open. And that's really where we're at at this stage is, as I, I hate to be a, a broken record, but finding that money to look at those in, to do the engineering analysis.
Can, can that be afforded under your current budget, knowing that we're not gonna get to construction? But can we sit down with our public works person and your team to scope out what that would look like and what it would cost? And who would do, how we'd go about it? And then we can each look through our budgets to see if there's anything, because it's just gotta change.
Yeah.
This has got to change. You have some resources. I know you can't construct things right now, but we have to, we have to have a path.
And that's, let me first of all clarify, the bridge painter is going to advertisement in September. And so I just got a final set of plans on my desk to review, but the bridge painter is going to advertisement in September. Now, Chris and, Chris Phillips and I are already talking about what we can do to work together to find solutions to this next step. You know, what are the feasible solutions and then what would we want to analyze and how much would that cost?
Okay, so you can come back in a month and tell us how that's going?
We are, I'm probably not gonna have any budgetary solutions by then. I can come back in a month. I'd love to report how Chris and I are doing, but I'm not gonna have any solutions for you in the next month. We're still trying to figure out what the legislature provided us in the last session. But three months.
Budgetary solutions. I'm not asking for the answer to the engineering part. I'm asking for an operational and financing plan of how we would answer the questions of feasibility. Somebody's gotta scope this out, right? Gotta scope out how we will answer the questions, how we will look at feasibility of these ten to twenty options. That, that's what I'm looking for. That's the next step. That could take a month or two. And then we can start looking at what, what you think we can do together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I could, Chris and I talk all the time anyway, so that's not a problem to come up with a plan together. But I, I just wanna make it clear, there is no money for this plan.
Understand, you can't make money. You don't have a printing press. You work for the legislature and we have relationships with the legislature. We can help find solutions, but I need a path.
Yeah.
And a plan to get there.
Nope, that sounds, that sounds wonderful.
Thank you.
Oh, I always have little pet projects around Mount Vernon. One of, one of the things I'm kinda hearing is can the city help, right? Talking about College Way. I drive up Lincoln Hill, which is Broadway going up the hill, under I five, stoplight. You go just past that, my boat jumps off the trailer. So it's, there's a spot right there where, where it's, apparently when, I, I think it's been since the hot weather that one year and the tires dipped in. I am running into issues of that's Wash Dot, but no, that's city, that's Wash Dot, no, well, we're not. I just, I don't really care whose it is. I just want it to get flattened out and you just watch these cars go over it and it. And, and if they're pulling trailers, things are bouncing and all of that. It, it, to me, if, if we can do it, we, we, we do have a paper, I think we could do it. But if, if we're running up where it is Wash Dot's property and it's your responsibility to fix it, can we help you? Or can, if, are you gonna say, well, that, that, we don't have any money to fix that right now? So when it's actually our street, but it's that intersection of the off ramps and the on ramps. Now, you're talking about there at the transfer station, at the bus station or you called it? Yeah, as you go underneath I five from the transit and you're going up the hill. Yeah. To go to Lincoln School or, or, yeah, as soon as you go through that stoplight, it's. Yep. It, it shouldn't be that big of a fix, but you know, everybody, that, that road gets traveled a lot. Yeah, the challenge there with the budget, the way it is, and again, I hate to keep saying the same thing. We look very diligently at the rules regarding city-state responsibility at those, at those kind of locations. And it's our interpretation that that's a city responsibility. So you're saying that that is the city's responsibility? At a city's street now versus College Way, which is a state highway, that would be a state responsibility. But because that's a city street, despite it being underneath Interstate five, that is a city responsibility, our interpretation of the rules. Cause it's not right under I five, it's the off ramps and on ramps out, out to that stoplight. If it's on the ramp, then it would be ours, but if it's in the city's street proper, even though it may be in the, our right of way, if you will. If it's on the city's street, our interpretation is that's the city's responsibility. I'm talking on Kent Cade going up Lincoln Hill, yes. All right, that's good information.
Gary, you just gotta move over one more foot.
Oh, believe me, I, I believe me. I, I hung the right lane and boom, cut.
Chris, the, the, the structure, they'll call it a house on the bridge. I'm assuming that's where an operator would open and close the bridge. What else happens?
That was the original intent of the wheelhouse. I, I think it's called the wheelhouse, but that was the original intent. The, and the operator would open and close it out of that hut.
What are we doing up there now?
Nothing.
Okay. Some people are doing stuff up there. Usually it's graffiti. And conveniently, there's a ladder that they can reach and climb up. Can, can we remove the ladder? If we're not gonna be opening, you know, we got a year to open that thing with notice. We could put a ladder back maybe.
I think some of us like going up.
I'm sure.
Talk about.
Could it be an Airbnb?
I'll check on that.
We'll check into Airbnb options for it.
Okay.
Can I ask one last question?
Mary.
I do wanna ask about what Ellen brought up about the problems we're gonna have downtown Mount Vernon with the bridge closure. And any reparations, I'm gonna use that reparations word just to say, is there anything that the, the state, is there anything in your budget? I don't know whose budget it would fall into that would help businesses that might face a, a significant drop off of customers. I don't know how that works, to be honest, but when she said it, it made me think about it and I, I'm not really sure how that works.
That's a great question and typically no. There's no for lost business, that type of thing, no. What we're, we are, we are being very aggressive, if you will, with our, working on a communication plan, working with Frank and Chris. We just had a meeting last week. We're planning more meetings to talk about how best to communicate, spread the word. Work with law enforcement to make this as smooth as possible. It's not gonna be easy, but trying to work with the businesses and everyone to make this as smooth as possible.
There's more to follow, I'm sure, as we, as we think about it. But I would just like to physically move that bridge down a little way so that we can use that as a pedestrian bridge in a smaller part of the river and then build a new bridge there.
Yeah, I think that's a wonderful idea.
Next month then?
Yeah. Put that in the budget, would you?
Any other final questions for Chris? Chris, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
On item B is a public hearing for the City of Mount Vernon's twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty-one Transportation Improvement Plan and Public Works Capital Projects Manager Frank Reiner this year for the public hearing. Hi Frank.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I do not have a presentation tonight because this is just the public hearing for the tip. But just as a few brief comments, we are at the end of the road that we started here in January. We'll have a public hearing this evening to receive any comments related to the draft twenty-six, twenty thirty-one Transportation Improvement Program that was introduced to you kind of formally at your last meeting and informally for the last couple of meetings. That's been up on the city website. I've received a couple of your comments from the last meeting. Those are, are part of the comments that's in my pool, if you will. I'll collect any that occurred this evening and with the anticipation that unless there is direction otherwise, I will bring you a resolution at the next council meeting on the twenty-fifth that will authorize the twenty-six, twenty thirty-one tip. I will also bring at that point in time, any responses to the various comments that I've received either from city council or from the public. And so unless you have any questions.
Frank, a reminder of when this was posted publicly, available to the public.
So the, in general, the, the tip has been up on the website for about three and a half weeks now. The formal announcement to the public, the advertisement in the newspaper has been out for two and a half weeks now.
Counsel, any questions for Frank about the process before we open the public hearing? Thanks Frank. With that, we will open up the public hearing for the city's twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty-one Transportation Improvement Plan. Anyone here wishing to address counsel or make a comment on the record? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing for the Transportation Improvement Plan. Frank, thank you for working on that and for shepherding this through the, the process.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Frank.
Item six C was pulled from the agenda tonight. Item D is the approval of an agreement amendment with HKP Architects and Public Works Director Chris Phillips is here with that.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. City staff recommends city council authorize the mayor to execute a contract amendment with HKP Architects for additional services for the Mount Vernon Library Common Project in the amount of fifty thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. The contract amendment addresses efforts to coordinate, facilitate dynamic communications and review amongst principal contractors, subcontractors and city staff in order to reach final resolution on a variety of punch list items and, and inspection items. Again, city staff recommends city council authorize the mayor to execute a contract amendment with HKP Architects for additional services that were not included in the original scope of work for the Mount Vernon Library Commons Project in the amount of fifty thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars, seventy-five cents, which will extend the agreement through December of twenty twenty-six, pending your questions.
All right, and council got an in-depth overview on this item as well as item D on the agenda tonight earlier in committee. But council, any questions for Chris right now?
I'll move that we authorize the mayor to execute a contract amendment with HKP.
Motion by Mary and a second by Andrew. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item E is the approval of an agreement amendment with OAC Services. Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. City staff recommends city council authorize the mayor to execute a contract amendment with OAC Services for additional project management services for the Mount Vernon Library Commons Project in the amount of ninety-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars and ten cents. OAC Services is under contract to provide those project management services since twenty twenty-two, March first, twenty twenty-two and through the expected completion, which was supposed to occur last February. This contract will extend their services through second quarter of twenty twenty-six. And again, with their services that they provide is basically just that project management piece between Leiting and HKP as punch list and warranty items are being completed for the project. City staff recommends city council authorize the mayor to execute this contract amendment with OAC Services for the Mount Vernon Library Common Project Management Services not to exceed the amount of ninety-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars and ten cents. And it'll be extended through December of twenty twenty-six. Pending your questions.
Second.
Motion by Yuris and a second by Gary. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Thank you.
And that is the end of our new business for item seven. I'll ask our city attorney if there's a need for an executive session.
No.
With that, we will adjourn the City of Mount Vernon City Council meeting for Wednesday, June eleventh, twenty twenty-five at eight twenty-seven.